I call meeting order seven to ten. Welcome to the committee meeting for Tuesday, June sixth, 2017. I'm Dr. G from Norfolk. I want to point out that please be advised this meeting is being audited. The video recorded by Norfolk Community Television. As per Massachusetts open meeting. Along, this meeting will be prebroadcast on CTV's government channel as well as uploaded to their YouTube page for easy viewing. To view this meeting online or view the schedule of air times, please visit W S W W dot Norfolk table dot com and choose your preferred option under the watch tab. I'll mention that public comment. There are public comments, there are forums over there on one of those bookshelves. Please fill out a card and head into this witness if he would like to speak. I also wanted to start off by giving condolences to the family of Henry Carr, who recently passed away yesterday. They got a graduation filled. His mother was a member of this committee and another committee many years. And Henry was really the heart of KP in his senior year a couple of years ago. So I think it'd be appropriate to have a moment of complacent silence and prayer. Okay, thank you. I think I covered all the principles. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Zelinski, who's going to handle this committee order decision.
Thank you. So we are reorganizing tonight, and so I would entertain a motion for the committee for Chair of the King Club School Committee for the FY eighteen school, Yacho will report. When we report FY eighteen school.
Yeah, so I just, I, well, two things to say. One is that I've been sitting in the chair for two months before I took that position. I was pretty clear that I could not stay in the position permanently. So I just wanted to reiterate that if there are new members on board, I am willing, although I'm perfectly willing to not be the vice chair, but that's, if you need new blood there, that's great. But as far as the chair then, I would nominate Pat Frankamato for chair.
So we have one nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
You do.
Are there any other nominations on the floor?
Do you have to turn around?
No, no, it's just. See now, we have a motion and a nomination on the floor for a chair, Mr. Frankamato. Can I, a vote please, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I think that was a roll call, so. Do you want to switch or you want to?
Why don't we do a quick roll call, roll call, call the former leader. Second, calling to order, we can just have a roll call of the members.
Smart, Connor, aye. Killian, aye.
We get to the first. You can put you over there. Mike G, over.
Pat Frankamato, Plankville.
Jeff Chalmers, Norfolk.
Charlie Macatee, Plankville.
Trevor Naugh, Renton.
Welcome, everyone. Next item we have on the agenda is the, is a motion for, I want to say, motion for the appointment of the vice chair.
Motion for Mike G's or second?
Other nominations are welcome.
Second.
Third.
There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor, please signify, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on.
Next item we have is the KP Regional School Committee reorganization with respect to
the subcommittees. On the policy subcommittee, we haven't heard from anyone in terms of wanting to change anything, but we do have a couple of blanks to fill in here. On the policy subcommittee, we have Mike G. from Norfolk, Charlie Macatee from Plankville, assuming you guys still want to serve. We need a member from Renton.
Pat, is there any chance that you could just very quickly tell us what each of these committees do for those that are new to the organization?
Sure, well, excuse me, I'll let the policy folks speak for themselves.
Sure, so the policy subcommittee, what we do is if there's any changes that need to be to our current policy or if we need to add a policy, review it, sometimes put it through legal and then bring it to the board. So it's not something that is consistently meeting all the time, but sometimes there is, there's some time that is warranted.
It's not a super heavy lift.
No, it's not a super heavy.
I mean, I would point out just in general for the new folks that the Unit A and Finance are the two that take up the most time, depending on the cycle for the bargaining.
And Unit A will be on. It's coming, yeah, it's coming.
Got a quick question. Is Cuomo, is it always, is it used to?
If you have, if you have a free member of the committee, you need two people for a bargain.
Can you possibly have someone, a person from that town cannot go?
I suppose you could always appoint an alternate, although it gets, it gets kind of, it'll get kind of sticky in terms of, I think, the flow.
Okay, the only reason I was asking is because we do have new members. I, I'm not going to speak for anyone here, but I know Samad was interested in hearing about policy and whatnot, so I didn't know how the alternate would work.
Well, if we take policy from Plankville, that's, I don't think.
Will that be okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Not replace.
I don't know how long you were.
Samad.
What's that?
I said, I didn't know how long you were policies.
Ah, that's great, we've been doing it twenty years.
On finance, we have Mr. G., myself, and Mr. Killian.
I, I'm assuming that potentially if I'm on Unit A, which I don't have to be, but by process of nomination, unless another member wants to be that, then perhaps Mr. Dow should be on finance. Not to comment here, but.
That's process. Yes, okay.
So I will.
Just, we tend to, doesn't mean we have to, we have been meeting, with some exceptions, we have generally been meeting at around seven thirty on Friday morning in order to make sure that we have people in place in terms of faculty staff if needed and certainly the admin team. If we needed to change that, we certainly could, but if that works for you, even better.
So what you're saying is that I will get on board with the finance subcommittee instead of Mike G.'s, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Right, it's my recommend, for the members who aren't on two committees, so that's why I was splitting it up, that it, that's just my, and you can't serve on Unit A.
Yeah, we'll take Finance, we'll have Norfolk, Killian, you're standing. I will stay on Plankville unless anybody wants to. Collective Bargaining, Unit A, Mr. G. would be volunteering.
Then, yeah.
Anybody else in Unit A? Do you guys want to paddle it out or?
Oh.
Are you interested in doing Unit A?
Michael, I will, only if you feel that your schedule just.
Okay, well, I was, I could do either Finance or Unit A, but I was going to take.
So why don't you take Unit A, because Finance is around California.
All right. Collective Bargaining, Unit B. You may just conclude.
Renton covered, that?
Renton covered.
Renton covered, Norfolk is covered, and.
That's for Unit A.
No, no, Unit A.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Renton needs to be covered, I apologize.
Do I give it a shot?
Sure. How much is the time, what's the time on that? I don't have to have your time.
It will be a significant time. I would.
For a period of time.
Yeah, for an extended period. It's, it's at least a meeting, it can be at least a meeting a week for ten, fifteen weeks, could be, could be shorter.
What kind of period are we talking about?
It depends, it really depends, could start, would, you know, earliest it would start sometime in the early, early fall, and then could extend, depending on how things go, could extend through this month.
There's no pressure, but I could be a part of it if that sounds like it's going to be too heavy for you.
I mean, I want to participate, but also want to be thought into the, how frequently this, you know.
I, I wouldn't want to misrepresent it. It, it can be a lot, it can be a lot of time. I don't know how else to say.
I don't think I can commit that kind of time to all of these committees.
Mr. Killian?
Sure.
All right, so for Collective Bargaining, Unit B, Mr. G. from Norfolk, and they are on, it will be on an off year as will Unit C., as will Unit D., so we wouldn't anticipate, absent something in the square area, we wouldn't anticipate there being. So Mr. G. from Norfolk, Plankville.
Yeah, I'll take it.
And. Mr. Killian, do you want, would it make, would it make sense for?
Yeah.
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 We're all for it, but it sounds like.
And then on Collective Bargaining, Unit C., Jeff Chalmers, myself, and Trevor, you want to take that as well? Collective Bargaining, Unit D., Teaching Assistance, we have Mr. G. slotted in there. Plankville is open, and. Do I do others? I mean, it's probably, yeah, hopefully it will happen. And then Cafeteria Association, they just concluded, and we have Mr. G., Charlie Macatee, an open slot in.
You can put mine in. Was that, could this be out now?
Uh, yeah, I don't see why.
I don't, yeah, I volunteer, but.
This is Cafeteria.
Yeah. Public Relations Liaison, that's not a thing anymore.
Any questions about that? We think it's the best idea to get rid of that position considering the past budget cycle that we've had, PR being an issue.
Yeah, I, I think we, we obviously have to look at public relations as, as a, as an issue, what, what context that takes, that takes place in, I think, one of the things we've talked about is having a broader, you know, having a broader discussion about those, about those issues and seeing where, probably cooperate with relationships.
So maybe that should be a full committee thing, and so is subcommittee.
I don't think it can be a full committee thing, I don't think it can be necessarily a standalone subcommittee, because I don't know what a standalone subcommittee is going to do.
Right, I think the mission of this one, which was the second one of these, since I've been, is sort of coming on, I think something else may come out of that, especially out of roundtables and our whole framework. We definitely need, as Samad was just saying, you know, this is a key piece of, that we had missing, and, but I would think this subcommittee, the mission is not.
Understandable, yeah, exactly what that exposition entails.
Yeah, they had to kind of come a few years ago and then went out of course.
Health and Welfare Trust, we need to.
What is that?
A number of years ago, we developed a Health and Welfare Trust because we hadn't accepted Statute of the Third Amendment. But now that we've accepted the Third Amendment, I don't know that Health and Welfare Trust really is, is a viable animal anymore, so we'll, we'll roll on that real thing. Representatives to the sick bank, Mr. Chalmers, Macatee, and we have an open slot for Renton. Charlie, explain.
Essentially, when you have a member of, a member of the teachers that request an additional time, sick time, outside of the time that they've already used, they make requests at the sick bank, and we take a revised, uh, line for that, as well as the members from that unit.
Well, their sick bank is, is really, they're donated days, so it's really a.
Well, I understand the sick bank, it's actually now what we did with that as a committee.
Yes, there's a man, four, three members in the sick bank, and four is to.
Why, why the request?
And then, and what it, what it. It hasn't really been very busy, but it's, it goes in spreads.
I think I've only, you know, got the problem.
That sneaks out of the chat.
Doesn't happen often. Yeah, very quick, doesn't it?
Sorry, Aaron, that's your baby?
Sure.
Cable Advisory Board Special Liaison.
Oh.
I've never had a report on that, I've never heard.
I don't think it really was.
She's still gathering.
I think it was a request from the staff, but I don't think it's in the function.
Why don't we ask for some follow-up from the Cable Advisory Board and ask them to describe the position in terms of details. Capital Budget Planning Special Liaison, again, that's a Renton designation. Mr. Killian, do you want to stick with that?
Sure. It hasn't come to light in quite some time, but I think it's brought something that we probably need to look in, into a little bit further this time coming this way.
Health and Wellness Special Liaison.
Decisions that people.
I don't, I, who held that position, and again, I.
That might have been Henry.
I don't think so, I think this may have been on there when at one time the state, it was, becomes policy of your Health and Wellness Committee, and I think, I think that was when it was started, a long time, yeah.
So let's, so let us check the Health and Wellness Committee to see whether or not we can especially get it. That's an affirmative? If we do, who wants to do it, how about that?
When does that be?
And look at how, you know, they update pieces and present.
We should find out then, if they're supposed to be vertically.
This is, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly.
It's sort of, they review policy to, they keep up to date with the current policy to oppose.
People within.
Within the King Club, yeah, please, the nurses can make up, yeah.
Too many members.
Special Liaison, I have done that, I can consider you to be there or somebody else wants to be there. We all do it to a great extent. Teacher Evaluation Special Liaison, I don't see if that's, that's done. Building Committee Liaison, we need a, that's something that we need to have a report on in terms of what is Building Committee doing here, what's happening with this?
They worked down the, they worked down the capital plan, oh, they worked down the capital, which, that was done, that was a couple of years ago. So, I think it was in the.
They were supposed to be working on the solar array that we've been talking about, but it was a couple of other things, so let's.
What are we going with that position?
Uh, we can, we can, we can appoint somebody to it, and maybe it would be appropriate to appoint somebody to it, to review it, and.
I'll, I'll take that.
Community Engagement Subcommittee.
That is fallen by wayside.
That's sort of, that, that is public relations, that, that again, to my point, I think, will be coming out of the, coming out of the roundtable discussion, going back to us in terms of how we're going to, all right. Any other, any other questions or comments about the subcommittees? Very, thank you. Next, we have the Consent Agenda, which consists of the approval of minutes of its bill in 2017, came with bills, financial reports, which I have not seen any, so I assume they're updated, okay. And we have no communication, so consent agenda. So there are motions to approve consent agenda as printed, so it's a motion, it's a motion of second, any discussions? Done, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on, Mr. Killian. On the regular agenda, we have communication to BICO FY eighteen budget. Dr. Zelinski.
This is a chief of update that the board voted at May eleventh, the educational budget for FY eighteen at fourteen million, three hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven, and you have attached some sort of shortened version of the documents, so it shows the revenues, the tuitions, what the budget, sort of the top pieces of that budget, and then some of the specific cost associated with tuition and service charges. So I will let you know that there has been a request at BICO from two other school districts who'd like to join BICO as a member. That does have some fiscal implications to BICO because they currently send students to BICO, which is at that higher rate if you're not a member district in BICO. And so we are working, we'll have to revise the entire agreement again to include if that is desired to move forward, and we come to, the committee would have to vote to allow the membership in. But we are looking at a way to sort of mitigate some of the loss of revenue from those towns in that if they were to come in, instead of paying the higher rate, they would, it would go like a fifty percent to a twenty-five to a ten percent until they become a member, so that loss of revenue would be dramatic for BICO at the higher rate.
What? Any questions? Why would you let any of the other advantages?
Well, the collaborative is stronger when you have more towns that are members in the collaborative, and so then it's part of the agreement that with all the towns, we can let other members in. They have you consistently sending people, there are other options to other collaboratives, they could also join, so you're, you know, you're better off, stronger with numbers than not. But again, the consideration really is, you know, you don't want to have someone just come in and then have this big drop in tuition when you have to sort of claim for that. And BICO member strength has been increasing, so it's been doing, it's been doing more, especially in the elementary level, social, emotional, is just huge, space-based issues.
Do the other members, do they have space available to, to supply to BICO?
That's one of the pieces, right, that's, within the, right, and they also look at, we're deciding if they're going to say, hey, Mills or whatever, KP, we need to open up another classroom, they really look at the profile of the students and the area where they're sending them to because of loss of issues, to make sure that they're together. So that's one of the stipulations is you have to really kind of be able to offer some classroom space.
Is there a charge to the agent for contribution, of the capital contribution?
Not that I know of, there may be, it's been, it's been, there's, well, it's been years before, since anyone has ever.
Because I would think that you want to capital contribution, wouldn't you, because a person becomes a member.
Yeah, I think, it's probably a nominee, and remember, the agreement was just redone a couple of years ago because the state put in all the guidelines, so I have to, I have to go back, you'll be seeing that contract anyways, you know, through the accepting.
Any other questions on the FY eighteen budget? Seeing that, report recommendations of superintendent, Dr. Thomas, anything besides the budget special, I could review in a couple of moments.
Probably not, there's some other pieces of business that are waiting on that sort of, sort of, assuming that's that coming down from the budget piece, but there's nothing of major, nothing major as of yet, other than graduations and stuff.
We'll note your reports from school committee members, Mr. Chalmers, Norfolk.
KP's going to be with us a month, Norfolk only meets once, and there's nothing new since last.
Plankville School Committee.
Plankville School Committee, last May twenty-third, we, people in old business, we review our policies, regulations, and we give a handful of policies. We also had our school choice vote, voted nay of school choice. We did appoint Superintendent Brage to be our representative for BICO Collaborative. We had a discussion about communication between the Plankville Public Schools and the incorporated schools, and so there's been chatter about that recently, and then we did review some job descriptions that are new to the district, we think, of course.
Thank you. Mrs. Stefano, Renton.
So kind of left Jeff more late for some.
And we have every one of the students represented. Do we know who the new student?
I don't think we've gotten anything yet.
We can send everybody to the place, and that gives you a high chance to do their votes.
Would be nice.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so next item we have is under our business, the FY eighteen budget update, update. As you may have heard, Plankville voted to approve a sixty-two point two four four increase above the FY seventeen budget, Renton voted to approve a two point something.
Zero.
I thought it was two, okay.
Zero.
And Norfolk, as we know, at forty-four point five, so it is incumbent upon us to resubmit a budget to the three, two, three towns for their consideration. I would entertain a motion to approve a revised FY eighteen King Club School District budget to only thirty-one million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars, which represents a three point two four four percent increase over FY seventeen, resulting in an assessment to the towns of Plankville, an increase of ten point seven four, which is an increase of five hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars over FY seventeen, for a total FY eighteen operating assessment of five million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, sixteen and sixty-nine dollars. Renton at ten percent, which is an increase of eight hundred and sixty thousand, zero two eight over FY seventeen, for a total FY operating assessment of nine million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. And Norfolk at four point six five, which is an increase of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars over FY17. For total FY18 operating assessment of eight million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Is there a motion to that? Is motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries on. As we have discussed before, the, we are anticipating once excess and deficiency is certified and called, that we will use three hundred thousand dollars of excess and deficiency funds to supplement the budget to provide for items that have been held back for the time being, which is ultimately going to bring us to approximately a four-point zero increase in FY17 and minimize the loss of faculty. Dr. Zelinski, you indicated that the dropping entry still have the loss of assistant principal and two faculty members most likely are...
Correct. It would be one vice principal at the high school, the district-wide instructional technologist. It would not be replacing two teachers who are retired, one being a middle school English teacher and the other being a middle school unified arts teacher. And after we finish, the numbers are on the... He was a summer specific. We have one position at the high school that's sort of running borderline, but it's, once the schedules are running, we need a better idea if there's enough fiscal dollars with the scheduling run to retain or not retain that position.
But in terms of issues involving double studies at the high school or double studies at the middle school, those are eliminated under this?
With the middle school, the middle school, the topic was potential double study, grade seventy, grade eight proportion of a semester because of loss of staff. That will not occur at the high school. Can I say that every child won't have, for the most part, students will not have double studies at the high school unless there's some, you know, particular reason that would happen, but I don't foresee that.
When you say particular reason, you mean a course that would not run because of insufficient goal?
Right. But I think we're pretty good at the high school with what was already running.
Does the SD get us north of 3.24, closer to four?
Yes.
Because those five positions are all north of 3.24, so we're, some of them, maybe say no to?
Yes.
Some of them?
Those five, I should just roll them up?
No.
No, no, none of the five, no.
There were eight and now there are three.
There were eight altogether.
The gray is the impacts, there's five positions in the gray.
Correct.
But that's a 3.24.
No, that's, yes, that's a 3.24, but it's allowing you to get up to the four, so those in the gray, I don't have it in front of me right now, but...
I think Charlie talked about the extra hundred thousand.
The two to three hundred thousand we could talk about.
Correct. That allows you to add the...
That's in the agreement.
Correct. Anything in white is now back? Correct.
We're showing that the 3.24 is being right here, and if we're going to fund it beyond 3.24, you would think that you would be reclaiming some of these five positions.
Well, the towns aren't funding it, I think that's where the confusion is. The towns are only funding 3.24.
Well, nothing, yeah.
And then the additional that we're putting in the SD, we actually pulled some of these positions back below, into the white area.
If you were talking, if you were talking a straight 3.24 without the three hundred thousand dollars, you would be losing those, the high school academics, you would be losing those below in the white area.
That's just a question, but I see it on here, but you know the facts of the matter.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Try to answer any questions?
No, he didn't. We're good. All right. Superintendent's evaluation. I will turn this over to Mr. Jeff. Okay. Yeah, I was going to turn this over to Mr. Chees, he's the chair and handles the mechanics of...
Well, all right, and I pulled the information together to the last meeting, go through this and go do it, so I think you're... So I wanted to start off, I want to give a little context for this to the new members of the committee and the public. So first, the superintendent's evaluation is done in law, done in public by law. The evaluation is based on about twenty-five or so indicators, have about sixty on the DSC superintendent's evaluation document, so that's what this looks like. We've selected some of these indicators. So they cover the gamut of the job in the broad categories of instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, professional culture. So it's across the whole spectrum of the job. So this survey was filled out between April and early May by eight members of the school committee, as it existed before the elections. So that includes three members who departed, and it does not include the three newly elected members, they did not fill out the survey. So, and just to, again, more nuts and bolts, it was done by a survey monkey, so the results page that was posted, when you result packet, does not include all the information in one place, it's a little bit challenging. So the document that was posted includes the title for each goal, the superintendent's self-evaluation, so that's most of the content, is the superintendent's self-evaluation, and then the results of the school committee members' ratings on that item and any comments they include. So the ratings are shown in that graph, and then there are comments if they offer them. And as a general rule, we sort of recommend that people offer comments if they're making a rating that's not outside of provision, so they can sort of comment on a later rating. I should note that one of the issues raised in previous years on this process is that we hadn't seen enough evidence to really evaluate certain goals, and given relentless feedback to Dr. Zelinski about that, and this year she provided a great deal more information, which is what you see in the document. So that's more or less the context. So, you know, what I'm looking at is the, again, more or less the self-evaluation and committee's evaluation, and then also if you have to go back to this document, if you ask the goal itself. So typically, when we do this, we kind of glide over the items in which there was consensus, a proficient above or above, and we sort of focus on the areas where there were ratings of less than proficient, or whether it was significantly different opinions or comments. But given the changes on the board and frankly, the experiences of the last sort of weeks, I'm suggesting that we'll go through the whole document, and I'll read each goal and expectation, and note the results, and then if anyone in the committee wants to discuss, add, modify any item, we can kind of stop you like a whole town meeting. So, does that make sense? Just kind of go through the whole thing? So, and then sort of bounce back and forth between two documents. So the first category is standard one instructional leadership, the education leadership promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision, powerful teaching and learning the central focus of school. And under that, we have indicator one A on the curriculum, ensures that all instructional staff design, effective and rigorous standards-based means construction, consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. So the first standard that we evaluated on was standard one A one, which is standards-based unit design. And the proficient rating says, according to the rubric, says, provides support and assistance for administrators to learn and employ effective strategies for ensuring that educators and educator teams design standards-based units with measurable outcomes and challenging tasks requiring higher order thinking. Frequently monitors and assesses progress, providing feedback as necessary. So under that, seven of the members rated, six were made proficient, two re-rated exemplary. And there were a few comments. I don't know if anybody wants to speak to those, to that goal or comments. I won't read them all out loud unless somebody wants me to do that. All right, that's one A one. So one B one. One B, I'll say, is ensures that practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content, quality of effort and work, engage all students, and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles and needs, interest and levels of readiness. This is all about instruction and ready and construction. So one B one instructional practices, a proficient rating would be while observing principal practice and artifacts, ensures that principals identify a variety of effective teaching strategies and practices when they observe practice and review human comments. So one B one, again, there were several proficiencies and a couple of exemplars. Any... Any comments? One B two, quality of effort and work. And the proficient rubric says, sets and models high expectations for the quality of content, student effort, and student work district-wide, and supports administrators to uphold these expectations consistently. And this one was across the gamut, it was all over the place, needs, two needs improvement, a few proficiencies and one exemplary. And I would note on reading this again, that I believe that the self-assessment misunderstood this goal, and so several of the commenters misunderstood it, what? The way I read this goal is it's about student work, not about the superintendent's work, though I think some of the comments, including the self-assessment, are about the quality of superintendent's work.
Yeah, I would agree with that. So you're sort of, you're put in a place of either not saying, either saying, there's no evidence here, or saying, okay, fine, I'm going to address myself to the...
Yeah.
To what I think the rubric would be based upon the evidence that you're giving.
Great. I just want to point out that section, I think that explains why it was all over the place, but if we want to talk about either or on that one, I don't know if you had more you wanted to say about that. There was a, I don't know who put needs improvement, there were two members. Two? I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that.
Again, I think I was, I think I was, I come to a big reference and I put that one once again, as I read, as I read over the other comments, it might be worth bothering you.
Yeah, you want to read it? Yeah. So there are four comments. Need for better transparency to the school committee and member follow-up is required. There are opportunities here. Well, it's whoever wrote it. Did anybody here write that comment? Okay, it's probably written by one of the previous school committee members. So we'll have to refer that sheet, are they all sheets? Need for better transparency to the school committee and member follow-up is required. The comment two, there are opportunities for improvement in this area. It's also the nature of people management that individual decisions and actions will never please everyone. The key is that consistent processes, standards, and rationale are applied. That's actually my comment. It appears that, this is the third comment, it appears that models' expectations sometimes seem to be inconsistently applied.
That would be my, that would be my comment, because I looked at the proficient rating when it says, sets and models high expectations, and I didn't have a sense based upon what this rubric was talking about, that it wasn't that the model had a high expectation. And it certainly wasn't, I don't know that the documentation that was provided was always so...
Yeah, so are you then speaking in reference to expectations for staff? Yeah.
And that's what it's...
Well, right. Again, I think it was intended to model expectations for getting students to do their best work. But that's not...
But if it says, sets and models high expectations, I think the individual is doing those things. I wasn't getting it.
Fourth comment, superintendent's provided evidence that she puts forth strong evidence in her work, she is striving for a high quality of work from all personnel in the building, and she exhibits enthusiasm for the variety of things happening within the district by attending to and highlighting these important aspects of our educational program. If anybody here sat down or pushed to speak to it, so... Are there any other comments or things that people would want to comment on that? Anybody change their thought? All right, so one B three, diverse learners needs. The rubric said, while observing principal practice, ensures that principals look for and identify a variety of teaching strategies and practices that are effective with diverse learners when they observe practices and review human comments. So that one was primarily proficient and exemplary. Any comments on that one? Okay, one C, assessment, ensures that all principals and administrators facilitate practices that propel personnel to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to measure student learning, growing, and understanding, and make necessary adjustments to their practice when students are not learning. So the first one is one C one, variety of assessments. Proficient rubric is supports administrator teams to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments, including common interim assessments that are aligned across grade levels and subject areas. That was all proficient, so no comments. Any other comments? One C two, adjustment to practice, provides the resources for planning time and effective support for administrator teams to review assessment data and identify appropriate interventions and adjustments to practice, monitors administrator's efforts and successes in this area. For one C two, it was all proficient. No responses. Any comments on that? One D, evaluation, provides effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions. One B one on educator goals, the proficient rubric is supports administrators and administrator teams to develop and attain meaningful, actionable, and measurable professional practice to student learning, and where appropriate, district, school, improvement goals. So that we had a proficient and exemplary. Any comments? I say, Dr. Zelinski has always required and produced smart goals aligned with district goals, those that influence administrators throughout the district, and the conversations I have at the administration point of specific actions that meet shared goals with superintendent, and in turn, it led to improvements in bridge and instruction.
I would only add that, as did everyone else, I indicated proficient on this. And the reason I indicated proficient is because I have, I have heard at various meetings, administrators actually saying things that support this conclusion. I didn't necessarily base it upon the evidence that Dr. Zelinski supplied, I based it upon what I've heard individuals saying in the course of open meetings.
Any more comment on that? One D three, ratings, exercises sound and reliable judgment in assigning ratings for performance, attainment, and impact on student learning, ensures that administrators understand why they receive the ratings. This one we had different opinions, so needs improvement, it would be two of them and six proficiencies. Okay, so anybody want to speak to the needs improvement?
I would speak to the needs improvement, and just comparing this, contrasting it with what I said about the earlier one, I didn't see, in order for proficient to be rated, exercises sound and reliable judgment in assigning ratings for performance, attainment, and impact on student learning, ensures that administrators understand why they receive the ratings, I have no evidence to support that. To my way of thinking, the superintendent saying that she did it isn't sufficient for me to be able to rate that proficient. I need some other evidence. I would need, similar to, as I indicated in the first one, I've heard administrators comment publicly that that was going on. I have never heard an administrator indicate publicly that... I have never heard an administrator indicate publicly that, that, that it was to supply evidence of proficiency in that rating. Would I would love to, you know, would I, would I love to be able to hear what administrators had to say confidentially so that there wouldn't be any technical blowback on them? I would love to, that to me would be the ideal situation. But right now, I, I have no basis to independently support what the superintendent is saying.
Is it to the timeliness and consistency, is that what we're getting at?
It's to the, it's to the sound and reli, I have no, I have no basis to say that she's exercising sound and reliable judgment. I have no basis to...
No, that's the simple, how would you get the basis to determine if she was doing that? And what would you use as a source documentation?
Source documentation. Consistency between what I see publicly and how that individual is, has been graded. If somebody is, if, if I see a certain performance level by an administrator, and I know that they've gotten, uh, consistent, you know, feedback that is, that mirrors what I'm seeing, okay. If I'm seeing an administrator who isn't demonstrating appropriate, you know, what I would consider, you know, appropriate behavior or, you know, doing the job appropriately, and I get that in the evaluate, in the evaluation, great. If I don't get it, if I'm seeing one thing and somebody's saying something else, and then I know this is just, how do I get, how do you get there? That's the, that's the only way. The thing is, if you're going to grade this, I think you need an independent way of judging. If you're not, if you're not, if you can't have an independent way of judging, it's just a self-filling prophecy because you have the superintendent can say whatever he or she wants, and we have to accept what he says about it.
How do you get that information?
Is it, so, we don't, we don't see evaluations, and I assume that's...
That's part of the personnel part.
So, short of that.
In London, we do a lot of surveying. So, we survey, we send surveys out to community, we send surveys to staff. We get a lot of input, actually.
On the superintendent?
On the superintendent, yeah. So, we get a lot, a lot of information, a lot of participation in those surveys. I don't know if that's something that we've done before, or we've thought of doing.
Well, we did, we did a...
We do the full stakeholder...
Well, it wasn't a superintendent's say, is that what you're talking about? Now, well, we, obviously, we did a big community survey a few years ago.
Yeah, we've never done the superintendent.
Right. And certainly not, certainly not as far as evaluating, of course.
Well, that's interesting.
I mean, I feel like, I mean, I'm not sure if we have any restrictions around surveying. I don't think we would, but, I mean, it's, it's a really great way to kind of get your finger on the pulse outside of, you know, these walls, aside from the conversations that we have, and people that are very active and attending a lot of meetings. That's just a small subset of the community groups are...
Exactly. Well, I mean, here's the thing, if we were, if we were going to do that, that would be subject to the superintendent agreeing that we were going to do that, for sure. Because, you know, the, the evaluation in and of itself is, you know, set within the confines of the independent employment contract. So, if we want to, you know, if we were seeing, I, I think it would be interesting to get surveys from, from the, from the community as well as teachers and administrators. I think that would be valuable, whether or not, you know, we can do that in the future would be something that we would need to discuss with Dr. Zelinski. So, that was kind of the short answer to you.
Two questions, a process for everyone to know. Do the eight people just each do this individually without any discussion?
That's correct. This is gonna, it's all independent. It's all independent. Because you're doing it, otherwise, if you were doing, if you were doing it one-on-one, you'd be violating the... So, you do it independently, go online, you, you complete it, and it gets registered. Whoever...
So, there's no, there's no distillation of this eighty-three-page document into a one-page summary for someone to digest and get a good snapshot of her performance?
That wouldn't really provide the necessary information. She reads what we need, right?
That's not, that's not the way it's designed.
But I'm saying that it goes, it's got to be a summary.
Somebody could do that.
Right.
The chair could have done that by typing up what's, you know, what was presented in here and just taking out the stuff over there.
The problem, yeah, I mean, somebody could, somebody, you could have generalized and said, hey, these are the high points and these are the low points. I think one of the reasons Mike is opting to do it the way, you know, for instance, we could say right now, hey, you know what, we don't need to look at any of the, any of the things that are adequate, you know, or, you know, that are proficient or exemplary. I mean, that wouldn't necessarily, you know, be fair, but, you know, if, if they're proficient, maybe you're not concerned, concerned about them. I think one of the reasons that Mike's opted to do it this way is because it is the first time that individuals, you know, some individuals on the committee have had a chance to look at this animal, the lack of the term, and also recognize the fact that there are parts of this evaluation instrument that, like, it's broken up into, basically, in four, you know, four general areas. Uh, constructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. So, you could do a synopsis on each of, each of those. One of the downsides that you have is if you came up with an average in any of those one areas. It doesn't necessarily reflect what may be important to the committee. So, somebody may have a great average, but if there's an area in particular that the committee is concerned about, and the individual is, is doing great in it, or is doing well in it, well, it's great that they're doing okay in all the others, because you know what, this is our focus and this is what we're concerned about. Is there, is there a better way to, to do it? We're open to it.
Yeah, I know, it's extremely funky instrument. We're using the three survey, the three.
Yeah, right. So, right.
Is there an option on Mike's survey monthly where it provides collective executive summary?
I don't use it, man. I just, I just answer the question.
Because I mean, often I know it's a very much difficult to do, and I just want to be sure if it starts off, so.
I think ultimately what this points out is one thing that we've always talked about, which is, this is a cumbersome document that could be, that could be streamlined. But, you know, one of the, one of the problems that you run into when you're doing this is that as you're going through, you have to make sure that the rubric matches the category that you're assigning. I think there are some times where people will say exemplary, or maybe needs improvement, or maybe proficient, or maybe unsavory, and not actually have read the rubric. They're just doing, going on their, what their gut is, oh yeah, that's proficient. Because when you actually read the rubric, it's, it's, it's time-consuming and very...
You also want to mention too that Erin just mentioned that she doesn't, London doesn't use the DESI evaluation, however, you must have had something approved by DESI in order to, to do an evaluation, because it has to be approved by DESI, by some evaluation process. The fourth by DESI. We have to get this approved by DESI. What do we use in, you know, for?
I'm not probably what system it is. I thought it was survey, but I'm not sure.
But do you use the usual...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because in the triangle, we use that too. So, those are the criteria that DESI has produced on, on security and on student performance. So, we have followed by DESI to have certain aspects evaluated.
And I think that my first year, go back to that level in history, um...
You did them all.
No, no, no. Before, prior to this, there was a really good, I think it was nineteen particular areas that were very, they were really on target and very specific, and it was, and it just, it was, it was procured from the state of Connecticut, to be quite honest with you. And it really was, it was good. And then DESI came up with this, and we really just adopted it because that was, you know, what we needed to do.
And like we said, I mean, there are areas here where it is challenging, because if you don't, if you don't give me the evidence, how am I supposed to, how am I supposed to measure? And it, sometimes it may be out of the superintendent's control to give the evidence, because it's not something a person can share, but, but we can, let's talk about it. Let's, let's take a look at what Rettam is doing, and let's have a conversation.
Well, yes, I, as you alluded to, I could have gone straight to my evaluation results, but I just didn't have the experience. So, for those of the few of us who are actively involved, so. 1D4, consistent alignment review. Consistent reviews alignment between judgment about practice and student learning data and provides guidance to administrators to make informed decisions about indicators of board and evaluation based upon criteria. That's proficient. Any comments on that one? So, indicator 1E, data-informed decision-making, use of multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district, and school assessment results and growth data, to inform school or district goals and improve organization performance, educator effectiveness, and student learning. 1E1, knowledge and use of data guides administrators and supports them identifying a range of appropriate data sources and effectively analyze the data for decision-making purposes. That's proficient. Any comments? 1E2, school and district goals. Uses data to accurately assess school and district strengths in areas of improvement to inform the creation of focused, measurable district goals. Provides support to principals and their efforts to create focused, measurable school goals. That was proficient, with one exemplary. My comment was ongoing progress in this area, though not intended to do more, especially on the communications side. That's, that may force this process, further process. Any, any other comments? Alright. Standard two, management and operations. Remotes the learning and growth of all students and successful staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, effective learning environment, and resources and adequate curriculum staffing schedule. A, 2A2 is operational system. Develops systems and procedures with the effect of supervision and support of custodial, clerical, food services, and other staff effectively so that campus is clean and tranquil and safe. I think that we had a needs improvement on that as well as several proficiencies. And the comment was improved fiscal management needs to occur in these areas.
I think the, I think that was probably mine. My primary, my primary concern was budget issue as it related to the operational systems. When I, when I talk about, when I think of developing systems and procedures, I consider them to be, I want them to be fiscally, fiscally responsible, and going to refer to the, to the overtime situation that we had in custodians. And that's just not, it is, I think it's, you're responsible with financial, financial management, developing that system, so that's not, I made a lot of that, but...
I would have to agree with that in that area, you know, we, we kind of fell short regarding the overtime issue that has kind of grown over the last couple of years, and we need to do a much better job to this way, able to unfold, so, I don't know.
I agree. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna... Well, I'm down. I don't think kind of fell short. Does it injustice? I wrote does it justice. I, I think that we more than fell short. I think we failed. I think that a budget that contains overtime, that is the equivalent of potentially four positions, full-time positions, is irresponsible. And to include that in a budget makes no sense to me. And then to maintain it in the budget over a period of time when we had had discussions about it is irresponsible. And then not to remove it from the budget until instructed to do so by the time it's up to me, I think shows a lack of reach. So, I think we did a lot more than fell short.
I would, I can't disagree with that, actually. I mean, I, on this one, I would, if I were doing it now, I'd give the last two months of deep dive, change this to needs improvement, but I didn't get it for proficient. Not only is it just the overtime, but I think one of the struggles we've had is getting the data and having it available. And I think a lot of the things that I'm seeing, especially being so close the last few months, is things that weren't done previously that could have been done, that made it impossible to dig stuff out. But, you know, a lot of paper and pencil stuff, you know, you just, you ask a question, there's no way to get the answer because it's not captured in a way that you can answer. And, you know, yes, I mean, every year you want to improve, and, you know, you can't expect that you have twenty-first century systems in every area, but it just felt like there were too many things like that.
I feel we have enough data points in place to accurately see how we're spending this overtime and for the project, you know, going forward. So, I think, you know, we did, we need to do a much better job. You know, it seems like it took months for us to get to where we've got data, and by then, it was, it was much too late for this, this, and that area, and we have some major obstacles going forward, to be honest. So, you know, there's some great challenges that will happen, and that we have to budget to ensure we do not exceed the number that we put in place. And we know, we know it's a good benchmark, that we have nothing to measure it against. And the other part, I typically have concerns, and that the data that was finally analyzed regarding the overtime wasn't provided to us until well after the ultimatum was delivered, which was, you know what, you need to cut the overtime down to a hundred thousand dollars. You guys figure it out, because it hadn't provided us with any data. And then within a couple of weeks, the data...
Just speak louder, please.
Oh, sorry.
We have microphones, you...
That's right, we have microphones.
Sorry. Any more on this one? I do want to cut off, but just, have you finished?
Yes.
Any more comments on this, sir?
Okay. Well, just, just really quickly, did you need us to rehash any particular...
Just get a sock.
Okay. That's a first for you, guys.
No one ever called that sock.
It's Mike.
My name is wife.
Indicator two B, human resources management and development implements a cohesive approach to recruitment, hiring, induction, development, and career growth that promotes high quality and effective practice. One, sorry, 2B1 is recruitment and hiring strategies leads the district's recruitment and hiring process and includes assistively advised effective administrators and educators who share the district mission. That is a needs improvement, and one needs improvement, and seven proficiencies.
I'll speak to the needs improvement. So, we've had a, the last, uh, both this year and last year, we've had some issues regarding management team, placement of folks in the management team, and I am very, I am very concerned, and I don't see, I don't see any evidence of superintendent being proficient in this area. I don't, I don't know that you recruited or hired an effective administrator or educator within the last two years, and I know that we've...
And, and I know that we've, we've lost, we've lost, in terms of technology, some, that was based on a need improvement. I need, I need to see more evidence. I don't have evidence that this is true. Other comments on that? 2B2, or not 2B2, injection professional development and career growth strategies develops district-wide induction support from administrators and teachers indoor faithfully implements the district's induction strategy, organizes high-quality job embedded professional development aligned with district goals, and supports the career growth of effective professional personnel by distributing leadership tasks, developing criteria for the reward of professional status, and monitoring progress and development. And that was a, so, proficient and exemplory. Got some very positive comments on that one. Very good things about the meta-programming K E, new teacher orientation meta-program K E is to be standout, et cetera. Any comments on that?
Mike.
Who wrote that song? Can't say it was quite, if this, I, I don't regard it as the public comment situation. Are we waiting till the end of it?
Yeah, I was gonna do the committee first. Yep. Absolutely. At the end, so, okay. I know, I'll probably turn that. Because I know it came about.
On this comment, yeah, I was looking at this, I have, I have heard good things about the manager of the K E. I have heard, who have you heard good things from?
Whoever wrote that, wrote that? I don't know. Does anybody have it?
The person who wrote that, where they, where they get, get that?
Well, if they, I, I would tell you that if they went to the Mass Association of School Committees and the, and the Joint M A S C, M A S S, School Superintendent's Association meeting, they would have seen it.
Oh, right.
Because, because there was a, they did a presentation on it, and there was a lot of talk about it. And it's been a roadshow.
Yeah, yeah.
A couple of times. So, it's been, it's been reported out on a number, on a number of occasions, and heard about it independently, and have seen it happen. I didn't, I didn't write the comment, but just in terms of, in terms of the source.
Yeah, it has been on the road, so, any comments? 2C, scheduling and management information system, uses systems to ensure optimal use of data at time for teaching, learning, collaboration, minimizing disruptions and distractions for school-level staff. 2C1 is time for teaching and learning, creates schedules, procedures, and related systems that maximize instructional time and minimize school day disruptions and distractions for school-level staff. The principal consistently monitors the extent to which these systems are effective. So, there was a needs improvement, is that right? Needs improvement and 7 proficient. Do you want to speak to one of those?
Yeah, I guess, in terms of the evidence that, I, I guess I, I wasn't sure that the evidence that you were supplying actually met what was occurring, but, or the net was, what was implied, but I, I guess, the information that you are, that you reference, both the point-of-service, point-of-sale system in the food, food service department, that was, I, I, that, that's, that's been talked about probably by Mrs. McKeen and myself over the last five years of every budget meeting we had dealing with the food service, and up until Tom coming in, it never happened. So, I, you know, I'll, I'll give you credit for putting it in place, but it's like so many other things that you've started to, or at least I've started to note, is that there are things that are happening now that should have been happening a couple of years ago. And I don't mind giving credit where credit is due, but it, it is, it's something that's happening kind of, kind of late.
Well, that's, that's the comment I essentially made a minute ago, too, that we're modernizing several antiquated systems, but we'll make backups for proficient, but it's, I'm not sure why it's that.
You want to add ways on your half office, too, or you're trying to open up just information that's still due, and something that on the other hand, to look at the revolving accounts in the rental facilities is a problem, is a detrimental line of circumstances. Should have been in place sooner. Not sure that those are, who are on the forefront of, should have been, that's what I'm saying.
And the other, and the other part of that is, the other system that we've talked about is, is that what it's called? The, the one.
Yeah, the truck, yeah. Because.
No, I'm talking about one. Officecope. I'm talking about Officecope. Now, the, the counterpart that we've talked about for a couple of years was.
Four docs.
Four docs, right. And, you know what, Officecope came in and they made a great presentation, and I'm glad they finally are going with something. But the purpose of going with Officecope was to make sure that the information that was being handled was going to be searchable by the public and the, and the committee.
But let's back it up a little bit, that Officecope was really interested in the record keeping process, but it wasn't in the forefront of the board docs concept.
Correct.
It was more in the lines of record keeping.
Correct.
The presentation did show that it was searchable.
You're correct. And what is concerning me now is that we find out that.
After the fact.
After the fact, that it is not.
But it, it's, it's quirky. It's, right, so it's, I can, so, they're searchable, the best way to explain it is when the documents go in the system, anything on the first page is completely searchable. Okay? But it's, and most documents have.
That serves us no purpose whatsoever. From, from, I understand we have sold the wrong bill of goods, but the minute we found out we were sold the wrong bill of goods, that should have been brought to our attention immediately, period, so that we could have acted on it. That is not something that is in turn.
Or perhaps is it being acted on?
Be in turn.
We haven't had a report on it. When was this, when, when was, the only reason I found out was I happened to ask at the last group in the beginning, what's going on with that?
That's incredibly deceptive. Any searchable document in any type of technology is the whole document, not the first page.
I did provide a memo on the update to the school committee on it.
Yeah.
We've been working with them and the T department to see what is, what is the issue or what is going on with that. So, we are, we are actively working on that. One piece of that is when you do put a new document in, you do also list, I want to call it tags, so that if you list your tags, it's anything in there that's searchable via the tags also.
But you have a supplier. Correct, but that, but that creates, that creates more work for the individual.
I do recall that it was in the bag at last time, we, we ran over it, but, all right.
It's just an FYI?
Yep.
Board docs is having issues on some.
Oh, I know. I, I, I.
Any more on that? 2C2, time for collaboration, sets expectations for administrator team meetings and creates a schedule that provides sufficient meeting time for all team meetings, prevents or deflects activities that interfere with administrator's ability to focus on the agenda during team time, establishes norms for effective team behavior. That's proficient. Any questions? Got, right. 2D, laws, ethics, and policies, understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements, ethical guidelines. 2D1, laws and policies, understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements, provides the resources and support to ensure district-wide compliance. That's proficient and 2 exemplory. Any comments on that? Fiscal systems, develops a budget that supports the district's vision, mission, and goals, allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school-level goals and available resources. 2E1, fiscal systems, develops a budget that aligns with the district's vision, mission, and goals, allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district, school-level goals, and available resources. So, this one, yeah, this one was all over the place. So, there was 1 unsatisfactory, 3 needs improvement, 3 proficient, and 1 exemplory. I don't know, anybody here give exemplory beside this? And, anyone want to speak to unsatisfactory needs improvement or any aspect?
I will, sir.
I think we've come to a conclusion that there's some significant work that has been done in the budget aspect, under complete action plan. I think the conclusion that there is some major deficits in this area that need to be corrected. And we should have an action plan that's, that's been corrected.
Anybody else before me? We don't have to go.
I'd say that well covers the case, Brian, that we, we did last year.
Yeah.
And that unsatisfied was mine, because I've been in that point as many times, so I don't need to rehash it.
There were many obstacles as we went through the budget process, trying to identify the areas of improvement and whatnot. We, we fell short, maybe that's bad term to use, I, I think we fell short considerably identifying these issues sooner. Communication was probably not at its best, and it was probably, it was, it was poor, you know, so I think we, obviously I didn't partake in this, so, my take is there were a lot of lessons learned in this budget process that we cannot have reoccur going forward. And I think the collaboration with towns is extremely important for us to move forward.
I, this was another area where I don't remember if I rated it, but I, I guess my comment was even more of a benefit of doubt than I would give now. I mean, I think that, you know, the numbers are the numbers, and people can take a paw at this or that number, but the reality is there was contractual issues. However, my biggest concern, this, this process highlight for me was the area of communication. I can go over that and get it out, but I, I, like a lot of, several of these, I was conflicted between at the time, what I was seeing in the big contractual issue, but also seeing the positives that we had put in place, put in action. I mean, we, over the last few years, we have thought we improved the budget process, engaging the towns earlier, soliciting new thinking around instructional programs, some of the CLTs, communicating early and often with the towns, finding ways to reduce operational costs, put more instruction, we've been doing that for years, finding efficiencies, and, you know, creating problem solving around challenges. I, I've seen growth in this's understanding of the budget. However, you know, so that was going on, but what then negatives arose, and again, I think it's largely around communication, sort of wiped all that out and made it irrelevant in some ways. Didn't matter what kind of, what we've been doing a year ago or two years ago, didn't matter to people. And I think that's because we have not communicated that. That, you know, we've done a lot to save money and completely relevant in a lot of these conversations, so that's, you know, that's not all in the superintendent, but larger, so, that's.
Yeah, can I just, just kind of take a little positive approach on this? I mean, obviously, we've had different challenges and issues in our budget this year and prior years. And I, I, in my comments, I said that perhaps this is an opportunity to look at our approach to budgeting spending from a fresh perspective, are we following best practices, are we making outside auditors or consultants who may be able to advise us of ways we should improve our process? Are we soliciting input from regional superintendents and business managers who have had greater success in this area to see if we can adopt any other practices? So, just some questions, you know, that come along, and, you know, obviously, there's going to be lots more discussion around how we can improve going forward, but, you know, I don't, I don't view this as any one person's failure necessarily, I just think it's, it's just a challenging situation in general.
This, you know, the topic, anybody else before me? I understand that you may not perceive it as one person's failure, and I certainly appreciate that, but this is the topic of the conversation, the superintendent's evaluation relationship to the budget process. And we've talked more about communications as well, a little right, but, what, I already referenced that, but the overtime, I, I didn't have a sense, and had less of a sense as time went on with respect to superintendent's command of the budget. I was, the issue of health insurance that we raised early on, that district knew about, down the pipe, it wasn't until we raised, it wasn't until it was put on the school committee agenda by this, by a school committee member, that health insurance became a topic of discussion. That's wrong. As far as I'm concerned, the fiscally responsible thing would have been to say to the school committee, we got a problem, I see it coming down the pipe, here's what we need to do. I don't think that showed vision, I don't think it showed leadership. We've had inconsistency with respect to the special, special education placements coming from the, from the elementary school. There's, there's inconsistency about what we knew and when we knew it, and who knew what, and what was actually, what information was actually shared with the committee. And we can't have that. Up until, within the last week, two weeks, the assessments were wrong on the 3.2, on what we thought was 3 percent, was actually 3.2. The, the assessment shouldn't be wrong, the assessment should be right, we should be able to rely on these things. So, you know, and I, I understand the idea of, yes, we need to correct this, we cannot, we cannot let this occur again, ever, but it needs to be pointed out where the deficiencies were, and shame, you know, shame on us for not maybe policing it better than we have.
Shame on us also, too, for moving the budget process out, I think that was a big downfall back in February, I had no information about the budget at all, and I think that's now part of the school committee itself that's doing that. I granted we pushed it out to save ourselves times, but I believe this whole committee never had a full understanding about the budget, and the true budget, maybe the subcommittee did, but I don't think the full committee had a full understanding about the budget until the end of March.
That's interesting.
Here.
No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, I have heard that.
And I think we, we have to take some of this blame.
You know, I don't, I don't disagree, if I may. The only thing I would add to that, Charlie, is, you know, in past budget cycles, it's been, you know, brought to our attention that, don't come to us with real numbers, you know.
To the.
They're look, to the towns.
Oh, to the towns, okay.
You know, they, you know, they don't want us to, we definitely don't want to provide any data that's going to move, et cetera, you know. Granted, going forward, we have to get the budget cycle much, much sooner. We can get, get our arms around things that are fixed and have those numbers available in the fall. So, you know, juggling that created some, you know, created some issues.
But I think there's, I think there's a lot of consolidation amongst the administrative offices and our having budget, presentation books, as we usually typically got, background information. I didn't have background information to stand up to any questions that were asked me.
That was my concern, too.
I had, I had a sheet like this.
Agreed. I probably, there's a lot of, a lot of elements in the budget presentation that we had built up over the years that just weren't there when we started this.
Which I, which I didn't understand. Which I, which I didn't understand, I didn't understand why they were dropped. And, you know, I'll give you, for instance, the, uh, the, I'll call it the in-out list, if you will, for special education, where we would get as part of the CTL curriculum team leader presentation, where we, the finance subcommittee spends an entire day listening to curriculum team leaders of the administration presenting their budgets. And normally, after we, you know, we had asked for it a couple of years ago, we were getting, okay, here's who, you know, here's what seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, special education looks like now, and here's where they're going next year, so that we could see the ins and the outs, and here's what's coming in, et cetera. It was a nice flow chart for lack of a word. We had to ask for that in March, late, late February, and I don't understand why, why wasn't that part of it? Why wasn't that part of the presentation? Okay. Any more on that? And what we, what we, what we need to do, obviously, is, and this is something that, you know, I think we were also trying to, uh, you know, to some extent, we were trying to give, you know, Tom some time to develop, develop the process and make some, make some determinations, uh, as well. But what we need to come, what we need to settle on, and in conjunction with, I think, uh, you know, the three towns, the finance committee, the boards of selectmen, as well as, as well as parents and community people, is, okay, what do you want to see and when do you want to see it? So we can all agree on what the language is going to be, so we can all have a common understanding of, and maybe different things for different people, and it's fine, we can, we have the ability to do that, we have the ability to, to generate, you know, specific reports for specific constituencies. There's no reason why we can't, and we should. But we need to identify what those things are early on to make sure we're building into the process. And that goes to Charlene's point is, okay, from the school committee's standpoint, what do you want to see and when do you want to see it? Anybody else?
Stand three family communications. Provides the learning growth of all students and successful staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders. It supports the mission of the school district. So we do 3A2, community and business engagement, establishes ongoing relationships with community organizations, community members, and businesses, engages them to increase their involvement to maximize community contributions to the district effectiveness. And I think there was a variety here, one needs improvement, six proficient, and one exemplary. District staff, especially the students, work hard to reach out to the community, contribute their time, talent, and resources to support each of the area towns. The other comment, with the exception of the future-ready schools initiative, and all other examples are what teachers and students are learning enough, the superintendent himself has done to establish, quote, "unknown relationships with organizations, community members, and businesses," which engage them to increase their involvement, maximize community contribution to the district.
So, that would be, and that was based on, yeah, I, and I've said this in other, in other settings, that there are times where I have a sense that you, you may delegate, I don't know that you necessarily collaborate in terms of some of these, some of these projects. And, uh, and they are in fact, um, projects that are generated by other people, and it's, I don't, it's great to take credit, but with credit comes responsibility too, and I, I don't always feel that, some, I, I feel sometimes it's quick as to take credit, but maybe not to, not to take responsibility for the things that don't work out. Comments?
3B1, uh, well, 3B is sharing responsibility, continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders to support student learning and development at home, school, and any community. 3B1 is student support, provides resources and support through enable administrators and educators to identify each student's academic, social, and emotional behavioral needs, including students with disabilities and English learners, collaborates with administrators to support families to address student needs, utilizing resources within and outside of the district. That one was proficient and exemplary, any thoughts on that? 3B, oh, there are actually, this is divided into three pieces, so on the next page, page 57, the second chunk of that is proficient and exemplary. And then on page 61 is a third chunk of that, is proficient and exemplary. Any comments on this? Uh, 3B2. Yeah, I agree. Family collaboration sets clear expectations for and supports administrators to regularly engage families in supporting learning at school and home, including appropriate adaptation for students with disabilities or being limited with proficiency. Proficient, all proficient, anybody? We're in the home stretch. So it didn't do any 3C, uh, or 3D. Standard four, professional culture, promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, continuous learning for staff. So 4A1 is commitment to high standards, fosters a shared commitment to high standards of teaching and learning for all administrators, high expectations for achievement for all. And that's split between proficient and exemplary. And I personally have thought of this as a strength for a long time, so, um, the continuous improvement over the years of the faculty's program.
I think the.
Yeah, I absolutely. Okay.
Trying to find this.
That's the heartbreaker, it's, you know, that's the heartbreaker. Exactly. 4A3, meetings, plans and leads well-run and engaging administrative meetings that have clear purpose, focus on matters of consequence, and engage participants in a profitable and productive series of conversations and deliberations, established, put it on through administrative team behavior. So, yeah, seven proficient and one not applicable.
This area would be good to consider.
Yeah, this was tough.
Yeah, I guess, and that's why I did, uh, you know, very not applicable here as opposed to, as opposed to needs improvement, because I think there was really no evidence provided, but I wasn't sure how that could be done, so.
Yeah, I, that one. Is it a strong area or? All right, indicator 4C, indications demonstrate strong interpersonal rhythm and verbal communication skills. 4C1, communication skills, demonstrates strong interpersonal rhythm and verbal communication skills. So that's the, uh, and that's split between needs improvement and proficient. And what I said, I'll just kick it off, and mark this as needs improvement as it's an area of ongoing concern in some aspects. So it's a proficient in other areas, and that's why often there's a split, because people like the monthly, the weekly, the Friday letters and those kinds of things. You can make every effort to keep the committee chair, public towns, and other stakeholders informed. You address hot issues, challenging issues quickly, directly, that's commendable. However, the quality of clarity of communication coming out of the central office really is sometimes missing. At this point, I would add too, that I, I think that kind of what I was alluding to before, it's sort of become clear in this last few weeks that, you know, as I was, I was saying, is that there's, going into this process, but what, I kind of have two examples of communication. I, you know, I thought the gross numbers sort of spoke for themselves in this situation here, but there were many key players in the situation that didn't have our backs and were pushing in the shove, and I think part of the problem is that presentations weren't on point with the situation. And the thing, that we hadn't really built up the stock of credibility to call back on this, but there's concerted effort over the years. And that was disheartening to me, as we thought collaboration, partnership, and transparency, but in time of unusual challenge, I'm reading something here, obviously, there was a tough credibility crisis to derail all of that. The, the second instance comes, it was a question from a member of the public at a budget and finance committee meeting last week, and it was a fine and reasonable question about the treaty plan, with a simple answer, but I find, I found myself getting a little, like, tense, and I realized that thinking about it, it said, it revealed to me how little people know what's going on here. And I, I feel like that's just been an ongoing, you know, issue and a goal, and it's really coming back around right now, because this is what we needed, and it wasn't there. So, you know, communication is the front door to the district, and it's the job of the superintendent to effectively focus both inward and outward. And over the years, we had concerns about the quality of this or that communication, but I think we're seeing evidence of a wider issue. So that's my point of view on that.
Yeah, I agree with Mike, I agree with his needs improvement as well, and, you know, when I, when I focused evaluation out several weeks ago, whatever it was, my focus in the comments was more around the present due presentations and written communications coming out of the administration, needing to be more polished and more succinct, and just being more effective, generally speaking. But to Mike's point, I think, you know, over the past several weeks, it has been clear to me as well, especially with the run of town leaders, that there's frustration around communication specifically. And, you know, I think the building of, of those strong relationships and trust with the people that we partner with in the member towns, you know, it's really important to be able to, um, you know, build that credibility and be able to partner effectively. And I, I think that, you know, so many of our, our issues can be, um, maybe not met entirely, but I think we can get a long way there with improving our, our communications to be much more effective than they are. And I think that that's for everybody that the school system touches. I think it's with the families of the students, with the students, with the town management, you know, with other communities, you know, it's our job as the lead zones to be more effective there as well. So I, I think this is a very critical case of the overall puzzle here.
No, I, I agree with you, Aaron, basically speaking to the boards, different members of the boards, not only members of the town as well, continuously hearing the same message come across over the last couple of years, it is disappointing, and we need to bridge that gap. We fall short, we fall very short in maybe explaining ourselves to the towns and boards and other committees. We definitely need to improve and group up on that and be very proactive in reaching out to them and getting feedback from them on a consistent basis.
Yeah, because there's, there's, it is one of the stuff here that we didn't see that on, that you're doing a great job with. And I, I think no one cares about any of that, because the stuff that, you know, you're having challenges with are so visible, and they're so, there's such a spotlight on it, and so there's, there's really no, no visibility in the communities about the, well, maybe not no visibility, but there's less visibility in the communities about all the really good work that's out there. And it's a shame, you know, and we need to make a shift there.
Well, the concern is that it's a shame, I mean, people in government see the results, see positive, the more they do have, the less they're going to need a positive.
I would add that the, it is about presentation, it's about communication. I was, to me, there was no excuse for not having, I, I'd never been, I don't think I've ever been to a school committee, a town meeting in any of the three towns, where there has not been a handout from Kim Phillips. And there was no handout last night at either Rhythm, as far as I know, and definitely not Plainbok. There's, there's no excuse for that.
I think the fact that there wasn't him at the elementary kind of made it obvious that there wasn't one too, as well.
There, you know, there, there's, we've never had that. I, I was, I was shocked, and I don't, you know, to me, that is evidence of not getting it. If it's not understood how important communication is, especially knowing all the stuff that we've been through over the last three months, not to provide that key piece of communication, especially knowing full well that we had it ready to go because it was done through a connector that went out earlier in the, or late last, late last week. I don't get it. The, the, you just haven't demonstrated the ability to deliver our message. And I know that you have desired to move K P forward, you know, but based upon what I'm seeing in the evaluation and what I'm seeing in, you know, what's happened over the last couple, you know, over the last several weeks, I, I just don't know whether or not you have the skill set to do it, based upon, based upon what I've seen. And it's come, it's come, it's come at the cost of, uh, a, you know, the, the cost of the credibility of the district. And that is, that's a problem.
So the superintendent, were there handouts provided, that just didn't get there?
We had provided, we had handouts, we had provided the Norfolk town meeting.
Because I, I was at that meeting, I had got the information, but I'm wondering, it just didn't get to the other towns, or just, where was the breakdown?
There were, there's a lot of information that was on the website, and I'll take responsibility that they probably should have been mass-produced and available to the two, the two meetings which were going on simultaneously at the same time.
But nothing's in the help book. We would take all the information, whatever, to be correct. So that was the event.
The problem is you have three towns, you have to be consistent in all three towns, three representative districts, not just a town.
That did change from.
My question was, it was, there in Franklin Street.
They were in Rhythm and Plainbok, and what didn't, and what, what was the difference, what was the significant difference? Fortunately, it didn't happen in Plainbok, although it happened in Rhythm. There was no, you know, there was no demonstration on paper of the difference between the impact of 3.2 and the Rhythm 2.0. There was no graphic representation of what that was. And although it was provided, again, the documentation was available last week, we worked on it. Late into the evening, it was worked on. Life wasn't provided, it is what it is. Anybody else?
So in five years, we've always had the information, correct?
Correct.
Well, may I, may I also, this year we had two versions that I think do, that may, was that, was that in March?
Can I just, this is the first way that we've had some information.
This, of this significance?
No, it doesn't. That we've had a significant issue.
Oh, with documentation, yes, oh. Yeah. Sorry, I can't handle this, but, sorry. Indicator for D, continuous learning develops and nurtures a culture where staff members are reflective about practice, and use student data, current research, and best practices in theory to continuously adapt practice and achieve improved results. Models these behaviors in administrators' own practice. 4D1, continuous learning of staff, leads all administrators and teams to reflect on the effectiveness of interactions with faculty and students, ensures that administrators use data, research, and best practices to adapt practice to achieve improved results. Seven proficient, one exemplary, any comments on that? 4D2, continuous learning administrator reflects on improved personal practice to. reflects on improved personal practice that's meaningful and develops new approaches in order to improve efficiency in practice. That was a great efficiency. And by all, and then indicator for E, shared vision, continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision, which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and a local contributor. So, for E1, shared vision development at all grade levels, continuously engages administrators, staff, students, families, and community members in developing a vision focused on student preparation, college and career readiness, civic engagement, and community contributions. That was proficient, right? Next, sorry. One more, right?
Yeah.
Okay. For F, managing conflict. Employee strategies for responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively revolving conflict and building consensus throughout the district or school community. For F3, consensus building, builds consensus within the school district community around critical school decisions employing a variety of strategies. One means improvement and the best proficiency. Consensus success appears to be inconsistent and scattered. What's the block comment? Oh, there were, there were a couple of other comments, sorry. The past year has had multiple issues inconsistent managerial skills and suspended the program year for many reasons. Through it all, Dr. Zlinski has continued to work in a professional manner. There are problems that, I would hear that, there are problems that need to be resolved, but I think just continue to be putting in the effort.
I just, I mean, my comment was the building, the consensus building, I think, inconsistent, certainly doesn't happen in terms of the community and the community, sometimes in terms of developing, even developing consensus among the, the admin team. I get a sense at times during presentation for this bracket, I don't get a sense later when you're on the same page, especially when at that time, people say it differently. So, that was my basis of view. Any more thoughts?
So, I mean, I think generally, the results are pretty proficient across, overall across the elements, but I also need to note that there were areas where the results were less positive in the comments, obviously. And they correspond, in my mind, to areas that the school committee has identified in the past, as areas of particular focus and importance going forward. And that includes effective management decisions, effective timely documentation, effective knowledge, and they decided finance, timely administrative evaluations, fostering a high functioning and collaborative team, preparedness for public presentations and forums. So, it sort of reinforces the, you know, whether you've got the breadth, that things that are truly important are, there are some concerns there. That's kind of where I, how I'm summarizing. Any other comments from the, from the panel? Miss, do we have any comment cards from the public?
So, moving on to the next item, school committee retreat. Our retreat is currently set for Tuesday, the 11th.
Excuse me. When do we get to say something about that? We'll know religion. There weren't any comment cards.
We announced, excuse me.
There weren't any comment cards.
Now, there are, it was announced at the beginning of the meeting, like we've always...
Oh, I was here since the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, I announced they were over on the bookshelf, but I'm happy to...
Can we just identify ourselves and...
Excuse me?
Could we just identify ourselves and ask questions?
Certainly, within, but probably within a limited context. This is a, it's a school committee evaluation of the superintendent. Certain...
My primary question was, what is the evaluation for? Is it to renew a contract or is it just an annual evaluation?
The evaluation takes place annually.
Okay. Well, I know that the superintendent's contract was defaulted to one year because, for whatever reason, the school committee was not inclined to renew a multi-year contract back in February. And I'm wondering if this evaluation has to do with offering a contract for the future?
That is the, I would, I would say simply that the superintendent's contract is an agenda item that will be discussed in an executive session. That the school committee voted to negotiate with the superintendent at a earlier, at an earlier meeting for a successor contract. And we'll be discussing the superintendent's contract, I anticipate, in an executive session. The evaluation...
So, is that coming up, like now? My question is, is this occurring now?
The agenda is before you. The next item that I have on the agenda is the school committee retreat date. The superintendent's evaluation would be, the superintendent's contract would be handled in executive session, which would normally occur as one of the last items on the agenda.
Okay, but if it's executive session, the public...
It was not, it's not open to the public, correct.
Okay. I just think so many of the things that occurred this year were egregious. And you seem to be one of the few members of the school committee that actually voiced that. And I'm actually surprised that the rest of the school committee didn't have the same consensus based upon how the public perception of the budget process and the communication went over the last several months. And it's not the first time. It's been over several years.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to the next item, which is the school committee retreat. School committee retreat is scheduled for July 11th. It usually takes place during the day. It, in the past, it has been a full day or a half a day. I would anticipate, based upon what has, what has occurred over the last several months with respect to, with respect to the budget, budget, et cetera, that it would probably, and especially given the fact that we have three, three, three new members who are doing this, doing this for the first time, that it would be who of us to spend potentially a full day of this. We need to shape up the agenda. I will work on that, look at it next meeting. The question that I would have for everyone is, with, normally, we would, we've done it offsite, we've done it here. If we're doing a full day, is, is everybody, is everybody amenable to a, a day that runs, let's say, nine to two or something along those lines? Yeah, sorry. It's not exact, you know, it's, it's, all right. So, we'll set it for nine to two. Do we want to have it here? Do we want to try to secure somewhere offsite? What if people withdraws?
Where we're at.
Okay. We'll have it onsite, either, either here or at High School District. And that, just so people know, it is, it's a regular meeting of the school committee, even though it's labeled a retreat, it's a regular meeting. So, if you have any portion of July 11th open from nine to two, come on down. All right. So, we'll start putting the agenda together. Okay. Next item. Change the 217-18 school year calendar. Dr. Zlinski.
There was a change that's needed in the calendar because the open house is switched in, the open house is broken in dates. So, the open house was previously scheduled for September 28th, and it needs to be moved to Tuesday, September 26th. That was the only change because the calendar has been published. It's just a move of that, of that date.
I know, too, we could change calendar. There's motions, there's seconds. There's motion, second, any discussion? Seeing that on paper, I, I, I should carry it unanimously. Thank you. Next item, director of finance search update. This is memo from Mr. Killian. Mr. Killian?
Sure. Yeah, we are in the process of, trying to fill that position. And we had some, we screened the candidates based on the criteria that's in the letter that you all have in the funding. And we have done the process. We have three candidates today and five on Thursday. Discussing the, where we're going to go forward. The dates are here and aligned for the first and second rounds, and with the final being on June 19th in front of the full school. So, talking about the process, wanted to get some feedback from the school committee in regards to, are we covering it the way we all agreed to?
First question would be, does the school committee as a whole want the subcommittee to forward one name, two names, three names? I think we, we don't, because we don't know, we haven't gone through the process. We're expecting three or four.
I think that's what we'd like to have, I guess, if we go through the interview process.
So, is there, okay, well, let's say then, is there, is there consensus among, among the board that we want at least three candidates put forward to be interviewed on the 19th?
That's not the final number, three, but just three?
No.
At minimum.
Minimum for number.
So, if there aren't three, then we...
I think that, I think there should be at least three. I'm assuming that if there were, if you wanted to put forward two and say, hey, you know what, they just, these are it, they just wasn't free to make the cut, that's, I think that's okay, but there should be an ex, there should be an explanation attached of this lesson. But I think the expert, it would, it would be hope that we had three people.
And if we have four?
It's a minimum of three.
Minimum.
Yeah.
We basically, we briefly talked, we briefly talked about the interim possibilities, which wanted to get a consensus or a feedback from the committee regarding that. We moved forward to at least get some insight from Masbo, right?
Yeah.
And we, would like to talk to that.
Sure. We, we contacted Masbo and asked, you know, because I know with M A S S, they have a list they keep of people who are interested. Masbo, since they have no one that is showing an interest in internal, you do not have a list. There's really not many available individuals out there for that. So, yeah. And I had also looked prior to a recommendation from the town Norfolk. There was an individual who was a consultant to them. Had made contact with that individual. They were in between and they accepted a position in another town on the countryside. So, they are not doing. So, I had done that, you know, a while, you know, so I've been looking forward to, to get a feel of what is, what's out there. So...
Do you have any thoughts on that? We covered everything regarding, potentially, in case the candidates fall through.
I suppose you can't, I mean, I suppose you keep that in your back pocket in the, in the event, although it sounds like it is not, it really isn't feasible. And the position has been advertised as a, not as an internal, as a full. Correct. And it's still...
And we're leaving it open to people to learn.
Erin?
I'm just not sure. The process is different in the school system. So, I just want to ask, the candidates that you're getting for the posted permanent role, can you discuss the possibility with some of those that you think might be true quality candidates to do a town to permanent, I got a big internal to permanent, um, arrangement? I don't know, I don't know what that's.
That might be, that might, I don't think there's anything stopping you from doing that, but that might turn candidates on. Because unless you're committed, I'm assuming the most, especially given the fact that it was, it was not advertised at all.
I don't think it turns off, not anyway. You know, just knowing those who cares.
Well, with that in mind, we would, I would be an exceptional pool of candidates to review. And it is very positive. And I think the feedback is, is, is good. The committee is actually made up of some very good people. Yeah, helping with all the names and stuff like that. We have town administrators, we've got select...
Can you just, once you, because I don't think everybody knows who's on the committee.
Okay. Yeah. We've got Karen Catchum, Beth Gilbert, Jim Lee, and Karen Catchum and Beth Gilbert are the business administrators over in the Rhythm and Random and Plainville.
Correct.
We have Kendra...
Kendra Cannelli.
Kendra Cannelli, who's a parent, but her background...
Her background was, yeah. Her background was a comptroller for a major corporation.
Right. And we've got Jim Lee, who's a selectman for Norfolk. We've got Karen Wolf, who's been a part of all, almost all of our finance meetings. She's our, we should have one public comment here.
Joe Thompson.
Who?
Joe Thompson.
Yeah, I was working my way around, I'm taking my way around the table. We've got Jen Thompson, the town administrator from, from Plainville. Anyone else? Is that it?
Same.
I think that's our committee. Yeah. So, we got, you know, all the people that will keep place regarding budget process. We wanted to, so that, that was the direction that Dr. Lay, myself, went to make sure that we covered their concerns.
My concern, for a concern like that is if we were looking to bring someone forward on the June 19th meeting, that's only two weeks away. And if we're doing second, using a fifth, doesn't need anybody, we don't need them. They need to make arrangements to come in here.
Unless you let everybody know, let all the candidates know.
Well, that's the intent that we're going to do, but, you know, that's the intent. But I think we need to be cognizant that if the tactic doesn't work out, that we have to have some sort of second.
Sure. And I, I think that, again, it depends on, on the situation. If it was a matter of not, you know, physically being able to be here and wanting to do it via Skype, I prefer to see the person in person. But from a timing stamp, you know, I, I think...
We're sensitive to...
Yeah, I think you, you see what you can do to make, to make it work if the 19th doesn't work.
Well, I guess I'm proposing that the 19th doesn't work is a possibility. I mean, that's just...
Yes, that we need to set the time now because if people, if you want a full committee to do the interviews...
So, we should look at the calendar for another date, just in case we can cancel it and then I think does more represent...
Right.
Yeah. Which is, we've got the 26th.
Oh, is that true?
Was it the 26th, Monday? Do we have any... Anybody, anybody have any objections to the 26th? All right. So, let's, let's tentatively pose the 26th as the alternative. But I would be letting the candidates know that the interviews will be the 19th or the 26th. Because you don't want to, I think we want to do all the interviews on one day. Yep?
Yes.
So, was there consensus among the committee, the search committee, in terms of strengths, attributes, what, what you're looking for?
Well, yeah.
What would I think? Obviously, the experience was, is something that we are looking at very heavily, their budget process. And that, that's obviously a major concern right now because we don't want to fail in that area and fore with some of our experience, forecasts, and budgeting, and dealing with major issues. As the year goes on, communication was a big item that we also considered to be a strength that we need to see. We need to be able to display that in the synergy process. What else?
Regional experience.
Yes, regionalization, where their experience is there, how they deal with the towns, four districts, communicating, getting out, out there, communicating with town council, guys and teachers.
I just want to jump in for a second. So, we have another round of interviews on Thursday. The 15th...
The 15th, what is going to happen is the candidates are going to be brought in to sort of do site business between the middle school and the high school. And at those meetings, there's going to be administration and also members of the KP. TA will be a part of that, that sort of interview process in both buildings. And there will be members from the full search committee that are going to sit in, not the whole committee, but available, I'm thinking two.
Basically, sit back and see the engagement between the TA and the candidate.
Excellent. Anybody have any other questions? Super. Godspeed. Next, we have director of finance, non-discrimination harassment policy, first reading. No action required at this point. It's the first reading, any comments?
This is, um, the response to, we had an issue, a complaint with OCR, which was about five years ago.
OCR is the Office of Civil Rights.
Sure. The Office of Civil Rights, and we responded to the requests that were made. One of them was to look and update our policy. We had done that and changed it. OCR was supposed to look at the policy and give us feedback on it and sort of ended up as a file that sort of sat there for a while until someone new came in and said, oh, we never finished off their file. And so they said, oh, so here you go, let's look at this again and provided the data, the information. And the person looking at it was like, well, we would like the policy to sort of look a little bit different. So we've been dealing with revising the policy and have legal involved with that to make sure it was overstep. So this is what you have is, is a policy that has gone through, both OCR saying yep and legal saying this is legal plans. Although I do know, we talked briefly about, there's a sentence in there that's kind of odd, so.
It's just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I had to go at it a couple of times and I still can't figure out what it was.
Clarification or?
Yeah, we'll get, yeah, we'll get clarification. I think it was just with whatever other issues OCR had had with some of those private organizations that are utilized within the, so it is, it's very weirdly worded.
Yeah, I didn't get, talking about what's up with skate or about organizations like that in their own policy.
I think it's organizations like that in my policy, but it's not clear in the, in the committee on it, so I will.
Right, that'll be on the team. And if in, if in fact, depending on, depending on what the, on what the agenda looks like, we, would people, would, yeah, I mean, would people prefer not to have a meeting on the 19th? If there has to be a meeting on the 26th, would you want to, yeah, put everything from the 19th into the 26th, or do you want to have the 19th and the 26th, or just dedicate the 26th to?
I'm waiting to see how many, yeah. I think we wait to see how many people are going forward.
All right. Next item is the changes to retail marketing and changes to honors band and basically the program studies before those provisions. This is actually required, this is the first reading.
Yeah, I get, yes, it would be considered, yeah. Because we need to be informed, and secondly, we don't.
This will be on that too. In the future, if we could, rather than have a bold wording and new wording, if we can have, yeah, and I, and I wouldn't say red line only because it, it doesn't print, I would have cross, I, I, I know what you, I know what you mean, but bold for new language, cross out for eliminated. All right, so that'll be on for the 19th, thank you. On the new business, superintendent's successful contract, we will discuss that in executive session. Pointing a vital representative to appoint Elizabeth Zelinski as a member of the county collaborative director. This is a motion, is there a second? This is a motion as a second in discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, is the reappointment of the district treasurer. Is there a, entertain a motion? A motion to?
Just to point the back to the service of regional credit from 137 to 230, 2018.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye? Motion carries unanimously. Reappointment of the school committee secretary. Do we want to, I don't want to put this on the 19th. Yeah, I can see how those parents turn out.
Chair was being adjourned. I move to reappoint Mrs. Lynn, the district director, because the search section, many from July 1st to 23rd.
Absolutely. Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye? Thank you. Unit A lane changes. This is an item that comes up annually. It reflects when a teacher goes from one educational status to another, for instance, a bachelor's to a master's, or master plus.
It's, it's masters, masters plus, I think it's 45 or 60.
So when they achieve that educate, that new education level, if they, they would move to a new lane in the, in the salary schedule, subject to us voting that on a basis, the overall cost of lane changes around 10?
This is 150, 150 for this year. It ranges anywhere between 70, an average 70 to about $120,000 a year is what we usually anticipate for lane changes.
So this was back in the budget.
Yes.
And do you have?
They don't, I don't know necessarily, but I don't know if it's in the contracts.
It is.
And lane changes are total, I mean.
So they're built, sorry, they're built into their contract.
And this is budgeted for at least, it's about a year in advance, teachers submit that they're anticipating a lane change, so then we can budget for that, have an idea of how many are going to be moving over on the way.
Their motion to approve lane changes. This is, this is a motion, is there a second? This is a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. There was a, Dr. Zelinski received inquiry regarding a bill 291 that was up for discussion regarding use of Native American mascots and banning that. Dr. Zelinski had a very informative letter to Senator Ross, as well as Representative Dooley, as far as the judge. And have we heard anything?
No, I do not know what happened. It was what they termed as a no-name bill, where someone from, one of their constituents wants this move forward, the representative must, of course, put it forward, but will not, does not necessarily sign their name to it because they're not necessarily supporting it in their opinion. But this would have actually caused us, if this went through, would cause us to have to change the name of the school district, as well as everything else.
I, I think that it's important to note that Dr. Zelinski, in her letter, did, you know, advise Mr. Dooley, Representative Dooley and Senator Ross that we have eliminated the use of the mascot at our event.
We never, we never really.
They just show up.
They just show up and that. And we have tried to inform the individuals when they wear this garb that it's not really appropriate and it's not what we stand for as warriors, so.
And in fact, that, you know, we have engaged, worked with Dr. Greengear, who's the director of Education Department for Mashkew, Wampanohtli, and have dealt with.
And questions of things that have come up, yeah.
So I think that's, you know, it becomes an educational opportunity.
Just to throw something out there. It's, I think, I think I told in a Friday email, I think this was a while ago, I think it was coming up, and we were sort of hoarse and normally we didn't know where it was going to go, and, you know, then all of a sudden it's inherent, so.
Also, late communications, there was a, just articles in the news, reactions at town meeting.
Recommendation, let's see, late communications, done reports, special committees, none. Recommendations and questions from any of the minimemers, none. Public comment, you don't have any cards. Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session. Purpose of the executive session would be to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the contract negotiations concerning Dr. Zelinski's contract, as well as to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if we may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining, which we will, we will. And specifically in reference to units, A, B, C, D, and cafeteria and retirees concerning health insurance, is their motion to go into executive session, not to reconvene and open session except for purposes of adjournment. So this is a motion as a second, and you roll for a vote. Should Killian, aye? That for the 11th. All right, thank you very much, everyone. We are in executive session.